He's in the consent agenda tonight. Call this St. Joseph City Council meeting to order for August 18th, 2025. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in our own nation under God, in the name of this law which governs the citizens of this land.
And now, emergency personnel recognition.
Alright, Mayor, council members, city staff, and guests. My name is Matt Johnson. I'm the Deputy Chief of the St. Joseph Police Department. Tonight, we're here to recognize members of our first responder family along with several incredible citizens with a life-saving award for their heroic actions. On June 26th, 2025, at 7:26 a.m., the St. Joseph Police, St. Joseph Fire and Rescue, and Mayo Ambulance were dispatched to a medical at QuickTrip West by its name, the one on the west side of town, after a 911 call was placed by QuickTrip employee Carla Marklewicz. First responders were advised that a male was unresponsive and laying on the sidewalk in front of the store, and CPR was in progress. When St. Joseph Police Officers, or when arriving, St. Joseph Police Officers observed several citizens who had assisted in rendering medical aid, including Diane Homerding, who had started CPR, and Amber Wentie, who had taken over CPR when our officers arrived. Amber, there you go. Officer Alex Lyon applied an AED, and Chief Dwight Funenstein began giving breaths with a bag-valve mask. When prompted by the AED, Officer Lyon delivered a shock with the AED, and Officer Dan Funenstein took over compressions. After the shock was delivered, Amber was able to detect light radial pulse. Several St. Joseph rescue members arrived on scene and applied a Lucas and continued life-saving measures. For those of you who don't know, the Lucas is an apparatus that gives mechanical compressions to the chest. Mayo ambulance paramedics arrived on scene, and a pulse was again located. It appeared that the male was taking breaths on his own at this time. Mayo ambulance loaded the male into their ambulance, continued care, and transported him to the St. Cloud Hospital. Joining us tonight is Brian Becker, the unconscious male who received the life-saving care. Come on up, Brian. Brian will come up in a minute and talk, but he's joined tonight with his wife Corinne. Had to say that right. Their children Hannah and Josh, four grandchildren, and I think I saw several more family members that were here, so welcome. I'm happy to report, talking to Brian several times since this incident, that he's fully recovered. So, Brian, if you want to say a couple words?
Sure.
Come on up, so they can hear you.
Well, alls I can say is I'm so thankful that I'm here today, and I am so thankful for all of you, and you three, to start at the beginning, for being citizens and just stepping up and doing what you did, and all of you first responders, and ambulance drivers, and policemen, that you guys did your professional job in a great way, and kept me alive or brought me back to life, and I get to hopefully live a long life with my family and kids and grandkids. And since the incident, four days after, I had a little grandbaby that was born, which I would have never got to meet him. So, I, from my, my heart and my family, I just want to thank all of you guys for everything you did, and, and just being so fast and professional and giving me good care. So, thank you.
So, we have a few that could not make it tonight. It's tough with summer schedules to get everybody here, but we do have several people here. So, Mayor Saponiac is going to issue some certificates for the first responders and the citizens. So, I will name them off. Chief Dwight Funenstein, Officer Alex Lyon, Officer Dan Funenstein couldn't be here tonight. It was close. Fire Captain Ken Jacobson, firefighter Justin Hunt, firefighter Jake Richter, firefighter Chris Zeta, paramedic Mike Horner, citizen Diane Homerding, citizen Amber Wentie, and citizen Carla Marklewicz. So, that concludes our presentation. We will meet straight across. I think Brian wanted to talk to all of you guys. If you could come over there for a few minutes, and we'll let you carry on to the council meeting. Thank you.
Well, with that, I think we have everybody in here that's going to stay. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. If anybody would like to address the council on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to do so. You can step to the podium and just state your name and address, please. Seeing no public comment, we'll close, we'll close the public comment period. Item number four, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seeing a motion as second, any further comment? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, consent agenda.
So moved.
Seeing a motion as second, any further comment? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for consent agenda. Item number six, continuation of public hearing for 2025 street improvements.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Bryce Johnson. I work for SEH, the City Engineer. I am here tonight to present, present the details for a special assessment hearing for the 2025 street improvement project. Wait a moment here to see if that will come up. Otherwise, we'll unplug again. Alright, sorry about that. Again, we're here to discuss the special assessments for the 2025 street improvements. So, these are the project locations, various streets in town, and all, all these streets are, are determined through the city's capital improvement plan. So, we lay out over many years planned improvements, and we, we don't always follow that exactly. Those, those can vary a little bit depending on street condition, but generally, these streets are determined years ahead on what will be improved and what years. Those project locations are shown here in, in purple shade, as well as green, and this thin red line is the trail improvements along Minnesota Street and Highway Two. These are the projected final total project costs. So, we see the project item, public hearing, estimated cost, and where we sit tonight after opening, publicly opening bids for our assessment hearing, proposed final cost. So, here we, we have a total at our first, our first public hearing, the, our estimated total project cost was just over a million dollars, and tonight here we sit at $981,000, roughly. This just breaks down the total costs into project area, a little bit more. So, we've got project area here, our estimated cost at the improvement hearing, and our proposed final cost here. So, again, we've got just north of a million, million was our initial estimate, and tonight we sit at $980,000. This shows our projected funding preliminary, and this is our projected funding final. So, we've got, again, the project area, special assessment revenue, city subsidy, and the proposed total cost. So, roughly 53% of the cost for this project is proposed to be funded by special assessment, with the remaining 47% coming from city subsidy, general funds. Some special assessment info, it has been and continues to be the policy of the City of St. Joseph that whenever infrastructure improvements are constructed, providing benefit to a particular area, those costs shall be levied against benefiting properties. With that, the city commissioned a special assessment benefit report to determine a maximum assessment. So typically, we will, we'll go off of the, the city's assessment policy, and then we'll have this third-party special assessment benefit report done, and that oftentimes will cap the assessments, depending on the property, the specific properties that are being assessed. So, the city's policy is to assess up to 60% of the street overlay reconstruct costs, with 100% of the street costs being assessed to annexed properties with no previous assessment. So, the remaining 40% would be typically subsidized by the city. And those special assessment, those, those footages are determined by the frontage of your property that abuts the project. So, if you live on a corner, you would only be assessed for the, the length of your property that, that abuts the improvement, if you only, if the improvement only lies on one side of your, of your corner lot. These were the findings of the special assessment benefit report. So, again, depending on the, the type and use of the property, this third party determines a maximum market benefit. So, the simplest to look at would be these rest, single-family residential homes, which are capped out per, per parcel. Some more, some more special assessment info. So, for your, your average rectangular interior lot, 100% of that abutting, abutting project frontage would be, would be assessed. The city policy also has different determinations for different shaped lots. Corner lots, again, the, the long side of that corner lot, you would only be assessed half of that footage. In irregular interior lots, we, we take an average of the, of the front and back width to find that, that footage. Special assessment rates. So, here again, we have our project area on the left, the type of improvement done, and here we've got our estimated preliminary special assessment rate, and on the far right here, we've got the proposed final special assessment rate this evening. So, as you can see, all of these were slightly reduced. Again, here was our initial estimate, and here's the final. So, these are the, the unit, the unit price special assessment rates. These special assessments may be paid in annual installments over time. They are typically collected with property taxes. For this project, the term is 10 years, and the interest rate is 5%. There, there would be no interest if the special assessment was paid in full within 30 days of the adoption of the assessment role. You may partially prepay these amounts at, at any time, and then you would, would be charged interest on the remaining, the remaining amount. Those, that would be, need to be paid prior to November 15th, or interest would be charged through December 31st of the succeeding year. There are special considerations for military persons, seniors, and disability. So, you do have the opportunity for a deferral. It's important to understand that it, it does not, it is not, is not a forgiveness, it's not a loan forgiveness. You would also still accrue, you would also still accrue interest over that time, but those are, those are an option. The process for a deferral, you would apply using a form available from the city. Complete, complete that form within 30 days of the adoption of the special assessment, which would typically occur this evening. The city council would, would make the ultimate decision on whether to grant that deferral. And again, that interest still accrues. Appeals, no appeal may be taken as to the amount of an assessment unless a written objection by the affected property owner is filed with the municipal clerk prior to the hearing or presented to the presenting officer at the hearing. So, that's the hearing that we're at. So, appeals would need to be given in written form to the council this evening. Sorry. You must serve notice upon the mayor or city clerk within 30 days after the adoption of the assessment.
And that's related to, if, if a, a property owner is going to appeal to district court, they have to follow that process on the bottom two bullets, if, if you're going to appeal to district court. Tonight, in order to maintain your ability to appeal, you have to serve the, the mayor or the clerk at the.
Thank you, Randy. This is a, an example, special assessment calculation. So, if our unit rate is 29 feet, and you have an 80-foot wide interior lot, you have 80 feet of, of your property that abuts the project, this would be your total assessment. If you lived on a corner lot, say, and your, your lot dimension was 80 feet by 100 feet, and the, the long side is where the improvement was being done, you are only going to be assessed for half of that long side. So, it would be half of this 100 feet times the unit price. So, if, if we combine these two, and both sides of your corner lot are, are being improved, you would add those two together. So, you're still only assessed half of your long side. This is a tentative schedule for the remaining work. So, we would be looking to start construction this year in early September, and the vast majority of the project would be complete this season. Minnesota Street, the overlay on Minnesota Street would not be done until next year after completion of the roundabout project at, at County Road Two. With that, I can take any questions from the council or the public.
At this time, does the council have any questions for Randy or Bryce?
Seeing none, we're going to look to open the public hearing, and some of the residents that are present here tonight might remember they're here about a month ago for another public hearing. The reason why we have an additional public hearing tonight is one resident who was impacted by street assessments this year did not receive proper notification from the city. That is our fault. So, as a result, we're having an additional public hearing tonight. Typically, that would be reserved specifically for that resident to speak during the public hearing. If anybody wants to speak that was at the previous public hearing, I'm fine with that. So, if anybody has questions that they would like to direct at Bryce, Randy, or the council, and myself, you're welcome to do so. Just state your name and address, and please approach the podium so people at home can pick you up on the mic. So, with that, we will open our public hearing.
If no one would like to approach the council, I'll ask one last time, we may look to close the public hearing. With that, we will close the public hearing. Is there any other action that you'd like, David?
Excuse me, no, you, you do not need to take any action tonight. You did take it at the, the last meeting. So, this was for any additional comment for the one that did not receive notice. So, we can move to the next agenda item.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Onto agenda item number seven, zoning text amendment for cannabis cultivation and B2 highway business district in L1 Light Industrial District.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be presenting the zoning ordinance text amendment item, which involves an amendment allowing cannabis cultivation in the B2 Highway 75 Business District and Light Industrial District. I'll provide an overview of the requests, and then ask for action this evening. So, the city has received two requests to amend the city's zoning ordinance to, again, allow cannabis cultivation. One request is to allow indoor cannabis cultivation as a conditional use in the B2 Highway Business District due to pursuing indoor cannabis cultivation at 417 First Avenue Northeast. A second request is to allow indoor cannabis cultivation as a permitted use in the Light Industrial District due to pursuing operations in the Northland Business Center Industrial Park. So, recent laws legalized adult-use cannabis in Minnesota and established a regulatory framework over the cannabis industry. The City of St. Joseph adopted a cannabis ordinance related to retail registration and licensing in 2025. This request is related to the cultivation of cannabis, which is not listed as a permitted or conditional use in any of the city's zoning districts. The draft zoning text amendment includes adding indoor greenhouse, including cannabis cultivation, as a conditional use in the B2 District, and as a permitted use in the Light Industrial District. So, I'm pulling up the zoning map here in regards to the B2. That would be the, I know it might be kind of, it might be hard to see, but the red is the B2 Highway 75 Business District. So, when you, if you amend the ordinance to allow for that, those would be the areas that it would be allowed, and then the purplish color is the Light Industrial Districts. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and held a public hearing on August 5th. They discussed safety, odor control, wastewater, lighting hours of operation, truck traffic, amount of production, number of employees, and the city having, the city's cannabis ordinance addressing cultivation. There was discussion on having an, an ordinance in place to provide guidance on how to handle cultivation. There was discussion on the suitability to allow in the B2 District that is more retail-use-focused. A letter has been included in your packet by Planning Commissioner Mark Thompson. The applicant indicated that carbon filters will be used, saying there will be little to no smell, that the state has rigorous safety standards, and any transportation would be rare, and plant waste is composting. The Plant Commission voted, they took two separate motions on the item. They voted three to one to approve the ordinance amending section 502.54 of the 502 ordinance, which adds indoor greenhouse, including cannabis cultivation in the B2 Highway 75 Business District. And that was based on those concerns that Commissioner Thompson had raised. They did vote four and zero unanimously to approve the ordinance amending, adding it to section 506.62, which is the Light Industrial District, to add that as a permitted use. So, the requested action this evening, you can do either a motion, all, all in one motion to table deny or approve ordinance 2025-010, amending ordinance 502 sections, 502.54 and 506.62. So, that, you could do it in one motion, which would amend allowing it as a conditional use in the B2, excuse me, B2 District and Light Industrial District. Or you can do it in two separate motions if you, you wish. So, those options are laid before you on the screen, and then, lastly, we would ask for a motion for the summary publication. So, with that, I can take any questions you may have. The applicant is here this evening, if you, actually, the, both applicants are here this evening, if you have questions.
Counselors, any questions?
Inflicting with the RPG thing.
So, would the candidates mind coming to the podium for a couple questions? So, they're looking at becoming cultivators, growers, and they're looking to do indoor cultivation growth only, and what the city St. Joseph is pursuing, and we're still waiting on the OCM Office of Cannabis Management, is a municipal retail license. So, they're not looking to per se sell to the public, they're looking to be growers and then sell to a distributor. Do I have that correct?
Correct. That's correct. We're working on location in uptown Minneapolis, and so essentially, I can go over some of the questions that were asked to help ease some of your concerns. So, crime and security, Office of Cannabis Management is pretty strict on that. We have cameras, we have alarm systems that go to the police, we have all those kind of things covered. Odor control, we use HEPA filters for mold and toxins, we use carbon filters for smell. It's actually a sealed room that we have, and so there's not even exhaust where air is coming out. We have CO2 that's feeding inside the room, so it's literally all sealed. There's no windows, there's no light leakage, there's no water leakage. We use coconut husk, so it's from coconuts. I mean, it's, it's a natural source. And essentially, when the drip emitter goes on top and drips, there's a pot on the bottom. You've probably seen with regular pots, the water goes to the bottom, and so there's no wastewater. And in regards to waste material, the roots, the stalks, there's a fenced area that Cory, the owner of the building, has where we can put like a, a composting pile. So, this is all regenerative process, or regenerating the coconut husk, amending it, and creating nutrients and reusing it. So, there's not water waste, there's no other, one other thing, product amount. It's not like we're going to have a retail shop with a sign. It's honestly like you're going to notice that we're not even there. Once every month and a half or a month, we take a whole bunch of product. We map out the retail stores in Minneapolis and other locations that want it, and then we either use a transporter, or we transport it to that place, and we use bags and devices that seal it from smell, has to go in a lockbox. Like I said, the state has really stringent rules on this stuff, and so I think that covers it all. For us, we're small, more like a boutique. His location is much larger, ours is 3,000 square feet. So, we're talking 300 to 600 pounds of product over the period of a year, but think of it like a fine French type of fine winery type of thing, where we're kind of catering to that boutique market. And so, that's essentially what we're doing, and, yeah.
Want to piggyback onto that with Commissioner Thompson's questions. The light pollution, the growing environment is contained, so there will be no light pollution outside of the building. And the physical waste is all organic waste. We have to separate any hazardous waste, they call it. That's just something that has trichomes in it. There's really no hazard to it, other than, I suppose, somebody trying to take it out of the garbage or something, but we have to remediate that by chopping it up and mixing it with organic waste, that soil, stalks, leaves, they're all just byproducts of the process, so.
And then THC, one of the concerns was the water contamination, so THC is non-water soluble.
Any other questions? Go for it.
Just, I'm glad that Councilman Schnetler brought up, is there potential confusion? And so, we want the public to know that we have, as the mayor mentioned, applied to get a retail license to have a city-owned cannabis store, just like there would be a municipal liquor store. These two businesses are totally different, they're going to be growing to sell to retailers in other places in Minnesota. I'm in favor of the motion. I attended the Planning Commission meeting on August 5th. It was a robust discussion, and I can appreciate Planning Commissioner Kennedy's issues that he has with it, but nevertheless, it did get voted in favor by the Planning Commission four to one.
Any other questions for that?
I don't have any questions myself. If you were doing this outdoors, I'd have a flurry of questions for you, but you're doing all of your operations indoor, very self-contained, it sounds like, and I understand with going through our license process, how much the OCM forces you. OCM forces you to do to be safe and have everything buttoned up, so I don't have any questions or issue with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
With that, we're looking for a motion to table deny or approve individual ordinances or both.
Have you gotten a lot of other input, other questions?
We're just taking questions from the applicants, it's not a public hearing.
I think your letter was in the packet, Commissioner Kennedy, I think your letter was in the packet.
I had a couple of other thoughts that I was going to add to it, but I thought you had at least a couple of questions that you had.
Unfortunately, this isn't a public hearing.
I move to approve ordinance 2025-010, amending ordinance 502, sections 502.54 and 506.62.
Second. Seeing a motion as second, any further comment or questions? All those in, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve summary publication of resolution 2025-057.
I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto item number eight, Rivers Bend five preliminary and final plat. Do you have that one, David, that you're carrying for us, Patrice?
No, I believe Patrice is taking this, is just trying to load, I believe.
Yeah, thank you, I'll be presenting the Rivers Bend plat five, again, providing an overview of the proposed subdivision and asking for action on that item tonight.
Could you put the mic closer, please?
I will do that and I'll...
I have my very, I'm still, that would be a little difficult.
Absol- absolutely.
I can't understand anything. If you could turn it up, that would be great for those of us who are in here.
Yes, I'll talk louder.
Okay.
All right, so this is the location of the proposed subdivision, to your right, you'll see Rivers Bend plat five, the previous plats are shown on there as well, in the corner, on the upper left-hand side, if you will, more west is Rivers Bend plat four. Essentially, this is an extension of Lanigan Way Southeast. The land use plan guides the property for medium-density residential, and you'll see the arrow showing the location of the proposed subdivision. The zoning of the property is R4, excuse me, R4 Townhouse Patio Home Residential. It was actually platted in 2005, encompassed quite a bit of area, including to the south, Kennedy, and over time, it was amended and went through various iterations. Here's an exhibit showing our transportation plan, on the right-hand side there, you'll see the overall transportation plan map, I have an arrow pointing to the location. Jade Road, which is also known as 12th Avenue, has been part of the city's transportation plan for quite some time, it's a future planned minor arterial roadway, and then the smaller map just shows a closer-up view with the arrow showing the future Jade Road. This exhibit is the preliminary plat, it shows the right-of-way for, again, that future Jade Road, and also the lots there, an extension of Lanigan Way Southeast, extending to the east and the future Jade Road. North, on the northerly lots, are four patio homes, and then the south, where I have the arrows, are two duplex lots, which are twin homes, attached side by side. This exhibit shows the final plat, which is consistent with the preliminary plat, and it's, really, plating is a two-part process, it's governed by state statute as well as your subdivision ordinance, and this is the document that would get recorded with the county after the city council approves that. As you can see from this exhibit, they're not showing the right-of-way being dedicated. One of the items that we have included in your resolutions this evening is to have that be a required for the dedication of Lanigan, excuse me, of Jade Road, so we are adding that as a condition for them to add that. So for your action this evening, we are asking for a motion in regards to approving the preliminary plat of Rivers Bend plat five, and then the second motion would be approval for the resolution approving the final plat and development agreement of Rivers Bend plat five. I do want to point out, maybe I'll go back to the map here, this right here, they're not proposing, again, that be right-of-way, we are asking that to be a condition of approval, that they add that on the final plat exhibit. As far as the timing of construction of Jade Road, that was intended, that it would be part of this future phase, they're not proposing that, so that is a discussion that's ongoing with the developers and city staff on the timing of that. It is addressed in the development agreement from a previous plat, plat three, just to the west of this word of Butts, you'll notice, actually, maybe I'll go back a couple of sites, you can see the aerial, there's a cul-de-sac right here, so part of that approval of that plat encompassed a temporary turnaround, and there's actually an easement over that, and this, the building permit for this lot will not be issued until that is vacated and this roadway is extended and then connects, again, future Jade Road, and then connects to County Road 121, aligning with Jade Road to the south. Otherwise, these are the actions, again, that are before you this evening, if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to ask them. The Planning Commission did review this and held a public hearing on the preliminary plat, and they are recommending approval of both the preliminary plat and the final plat, they did not weigh in on, in regards to the timing of Jade Road, they didn't have any input on that. The one item they did ask as a condition that be added, and it was added to the resolutions, is for a temporary construction easement, or excuse me, access off of that future Jade Road, they wanted construction to come off that.
So with that, any questions, counselors?
So what they're saying is that they want the city to have that?
Can hear, all right.
Thank you, I appreciate you speaking up so that you can hear. Is that better?
Better.
Perfect, thank you. So what you're saying is that they're requesting the city to have access so that they can get to that for development?
No, it would actually be for the developer, so they would have to put the improvements in, and so part of their request and they're proposing the subdivision, they have to do those improvements, so put the new roadway that will serve the patio home lots as well as the duplex lots.
Okay, and so...
So that would be on the, that would be the developer's responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I personally have none myself, so we are just looking for a motion to approve resolution 2025-04 then.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing a motion as second, any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I will make the motion to approve resolution 2025-055 for the final plat, looking for a second. Seeing a motion as second, any further comments? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Patrice. Onto item number nine, labor peace agreement for Red Pine Group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'll be fairly brief with this one, it's actually, from my opinion, a bit more of a formality that we're required from OCM. One of the interesting quirks of the law that was passed is that we have to have a labor peace agreement with any potential unions, that would be for the municipal dispensary employees, however, as the councils are aware, we are contracting with Red Pine Group to provide the management services for that, which would include, they would, they would employ the employees, so that was not really addressed in the law, so one of the things that we've been working on for a little while is how to address that. So what we have, what the attorneys have come up with is a labor peace agreement, which would specifically, which specifically references the Teamsters here, because they are the one union group that has, I guess, expressed interest in potentially representing any employees, so the agreement that is, it is written, it specifies that the city intends to hire the independent contractor to run the retail space, and the agreement will either be assigned to the operator, or the operator may enter into a separate agreement with the union if they so choose to unionize, so they would not have to unionize, but it would, this agreement would be in place if they so choose. So with that being said, it is approved by, to form and content by the city attorney that is representing us in the municipal cannabis dispensary. So with that, I'll take any questions, otherwise, we'd just be looking for a motion to approve the labor peace agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the labor peace agreement.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David. Item number 10, department reports.
I'll add something real quick, I just want to give a shout out to my fellow coworkers, Kayla, David, Lori, and everyone that helped fill in while I was out for the past four weeks, and also thank you too, Therese, for filling in and helping as well, so very appreciative, we have a great team, so thank you, everyone.
Glad to have you back, Nate. Anybody else? Department reports? Nothing? With that, we have mayor and council reports. Anything?
Tonight.
I'd want to mention that tonight's a unique circumstance where we're having our work session after a city council meeting, traditionally, that is before that we have on a monthly basis, so immediately following this, we're going to walk across the hall to our conference room, and we'll be discussing native plant ordinance for roughly an hour, if we can get through that quickly and swiftly, we have a couple other topics to discuss, but if not, we'll just be attending to that one. So if anybody would like to come to that, work sessions are open to the public, and you're more than welcome to do so. Seeing no other reports, looking for a motion adjourned.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
She must have been living on Lanigan Way, but her opportunity...